All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you again for joining another virtual town hall this week. Today, we have Dr. Helen Morgan from the Hawthorne School District. And also joining us today is Esmeralda Flores from the LA County Board of Education. And she's going to touch on the census as well and why that's going to be a very important topic, especially as we come into the school year in regarding funding that we could use for additional school services. We have quite a large audience today. I think we have roughly 146 registered individuals to hop on today. So we're gonna start in about a couple of minutes. Just let everyone jump on board. So bear with us as everyone comes in. Okay, wonderful. All right, again, everyone, thank you for joining me here today. Again, this is another virtual town hall. We hold, I hold these every second and fourth Thursday of the month. And on these town halls, I kind of bring in other electeds from around the region surrounding Hawthorne to kind of touch on, you know, important topics that kind of deal with your everyday life. Especially now as you're rolling into the upcoming school year, a very hot topic now is, you know, the school year rollout, how that's going to look like, especially as we're dealing with this resurgence of COVID-19. So I know that today we have Dr. Helen Morgan, the superintendent of the Hawthorne School District. And we also have Esmeralda Flores from the LA County Board of Education to touch on a wide, wide range of topics regarding census, how that helps with the funding for extra school services, what the next school year is going to look like if we're rolling into a distance learning kind of field and environment. And to answer a lot of the questions that you guys have been presenting to me over the past few weeks and months, just to kind of put yourselves at ease. So with that, we'll, we'll begin kind of with a little intro of who our top two speakers are today. So of course, first, we have a Dr. Helen Morgan, as I mentioned before, is the superintendent for Hawthorne School District. Has a bachelor of science degree from USC and came to Hawthorne School District as a sixth grade teacher. And is now our wonderful and strong superintendent. So with that, I kind of want to give her the floor. I know there's a lot of things you want to touch on. Dr. Morgan, by all means.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wad. Am I coming through loud and clear? Yes, okay. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I want to ensure that everybody understands that within the city of Hawthorne, there are several school districts. So I don't want you to be confused by what I say if I'm not your school district. So we have the Wisburne School District within the city of Hawthorne, the Lawndale School District within the city of Hawthorne, the Los Angeles Unified School District within the city of Hawthorne, and Sentinel Valley Unified, or Sentinel Valley Union High School District. Hawthorne School District is the largest of those school districts and serves the majority of the elementary students in the city. But I just want to make sure that, for example, if you live in Bodger Park, your school district is Lawndale School District. I want to make sure that you don't think that everything I say may apply to you. So you want to check with your local school district to make sure that what you're hearing applies to you. So I know the big question on everybody's mind is what is school going to look like in the fall? That was the big question on all of our minds for a very long time. On March 13th, we suspended school for the 2019-2020 school year. We thought we were going to be out for three weeks, have spring break, and come back and everything would be back to normal. Well, as you know, that didn't quite happen. We ended up suspending the entire school year. And then we had to reevaluate what the new school year was going to look like with all of the rules and regulations put in place by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, who has been working very closely with schools to help us navigate our way through all of this. On Friday, July 17th, Governor Newsom made the decision that schools, school districts that were within counties that are on the watch list from the state would not open to face-to-face instruction. On Friday, there were 32 counties on that list. This morning, I was in a meeting with Dr. Ferrer. There are now 35 counties on that list. So as we can see, the COVID crisis continues to grow. And Los Angeles County is on the list. Therefore, by the governor's mandate, we will not be starting school in person on August 19th for our TK through eighth grade students. Our high school starts the following day. Our Hawthorne Math and Science Academy starts the day after that. But we will begin in a virtual environment. I know that my principals will be getting in touch with families to let them know exactly who their teachers are going to be, what the classes will look like. But I want to ensure that our students have the materials that they need in order to start the year. When we started distance learning back in March or April, we deployed 5,000 Chromebooks to our students. We deployed hotspots so that our families that didn't have internet connectivity would have it. But we also, as we start the year, it is going to look a little different. The governor has been very clear that distance learning has to be more robust than it was when we pivoted to that model of instruction back in the spring. So that having been said, our day is going to look more like a regular school day instead of two hours in the morning and then small group instruction throughout the day. Students are going to have to attend a longer school day, all online. We have worked on schedules to ensure that students are being engaged in learning. We are purchasing an online program for those days that they're not face-to-face with their regular classroom teacher. They can be engaged in asynchronous learning. But they will have contact with the adults on campus through our deans, our counselors, our coaches, our special projects teachers. All of those support staff will be engaging with students because something that the governor said loud and clear is that students have to have interaction with an adult every day. And they have to have the opportunity to interact with other students every day. So my mantra has been since all of this started is every student, every day. I know I have staff who have children in other districts that didn't necessarily get face-to-face time with their teachers every day. So I'm very proud of the fact that our teachers provided face-to-face instruction every single day. And I want, and that has to continue, and we will ensure that that continues. I want to ensure that our families have the materials that they need in order for quality, robust instruction to happen. So we will be reaching out to families that need Chromebooks in order for their children to get online. Families that don't have internet access. I would love to bend Councilmember Wad's ear to see about citywide access at some point in time. But for now, I'll leave it to us to provide those jetpacks for our families that don't have access. We are working on putting together a pack of classroom essentials, so to speak. They're actually going to come in pizza boxes because they fit so nicely in there. But it will have things like pencils and crayons and glue sticks and those things that if a teacher wants to do an art project with a student, we can ensure that they have the materials necessary to participate in that activity. It will also include some consumable materials for our younger kids that need some of that fine motor skill practice. For our older students, some of the consumable books that we have. So all of that, and in addition to that, we are also purchasing headsets for every student with the microphone because in some families, we have three or four children that are working at the same time. And it can be really distracting if you're having to listen to brother or sister listening to their teachers. So we want to ensure success however we can. We are in the process of ordering 7,000 headsets so that we can provide them to every student to further ensure success in this model. We all want our students back in school. Nobody wants to have more than I do. I want our kids back in school. But until it's safe to do that, until we can ensure our staff is safe, our students are safe, we just can't do it. When we do return, it is going to mean approximately 11 to 12 students in a classroom at a time. So schedules are going to look a bit different. Again, we are going to have to do alternate days. We don't know when that will be. We don't know when we are going to be able to return to onsite instruction. But we have plans in place for when we do. We're ready, we're ready to go there. Let me just say that part of, the best part of most of my days are when I can go to a school site and interact with kids. So I have missed that opportunity as much as our teachers have and our students have. So all of us want our kids back. We know that's the best model. But until we get this COVID crisis under control, it is best for our students to remain at home so that we can flatten that curve and get everybody healthy.
Perfect. Thank you for kind of going over that, Dr. Morgan. It is, it has been quite difficult for a lot of the families out here in Hawthorne, you know, kind of understanding how the different school district works. They kind of think that the Hawthorne School District is umbrella for, you know, every middle school, high school, preschool. Everything just falls under, under your hat, but really it doesn't. There's, there's the Wisburne School District, as you mentioned, the Sentinel Valley, Sentinel Valley School Board District. There's quite a few. There's the Lawndale School District. And it really cuts into Hawthorne and almost like a puzzle piece. But I'm glad you're here to kind of, kind of give some enlightenment to the differences between the school districts, what schools kind of fall under each one, and their jurisdiction. They kind of think that the budget for all the schools are in one account. And that truly isn't, isn't the case. And because of like the whole separation of powers and budget, Hawthorne School District can't really dictate to Sentinel how to operate and vice versa. The same thing with Wisburne. So it really, it is going to take this kind of regional effort to roll out this distance learning kind of program. And for the Wi-Fi, yes, that is something I've put on the agenda upcoming. We have to shift the funds. And that shouldn't be a burden on the school district or the, or the parents. We're going to make this a joint effort. Truly, I mean, it's, it's hard enough dealing with this pandemic. Now to also worry about, you know, affording rent, affording school supplies, the Chromebooks. I actually want to thank you for actually taking the initiative with the district and providing the necessary equipment. A lot of parents are kind of skeptical and a little weary of, do they have to go out and buy these Chromebooks? Do they have to get Wi-Fi? You kind of eat a lot of parents' their minds today. And, you know, even though there's a little bit of a push now to open certain schools, at the end of the day, we're looking out for our residents, for your students, for their parents. We don't want to open and then, you know, God forbid, one teacher goes down, then the whole school basically shuts down. That's something we don't want to see. So again, thank you for taking this. I know it's not easy, especially for the both of you and for the other school districts. Know that whatever I can do as a council member, whether funds are legally available for us to help out with that, by all means, I'll push and fight. I'll take your guys' lead and I'll keep pushing with you. So we'll jump back to and touch a few more questions from the residents that are popping up now here. But before we do that, I wanted to kind of switch over to Esmeralda Flores to kind of touch on the county side of everything, the Board of Education and the upcoming census and why it's so important that we get a good tally mark to really get those necessary funds that we need. So again, Esmeralda Flores is a specialist for the census campaign at the Los Angeles County Office of Education. Prior, she has worked for field supervisor with the US Census Bureau for the 2020 census and is here today to give us her time to kind of go over the program and what that entails for the upcoming school year. Esmeralda, all you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And so I'm really happy to be here today. I am super excited. I am just as excited when I started with this campaign, considering the type of year that we've been having for 2020. And so as you can see in the photo, there was a lot of young youthful energy there. And I'm still going post-COVID-19. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So just want to highlight, so a big portion of what I'm speaking about today is the 2020 census. It is still continuing and Hawthorne counts. And I'm really excited to have been working with districts and charter schools across the county of Los Angeles in really helping our families and students understand and know the importance of being counted with the census. Next slide, please. So what is my point here again is going to be that the time is now. And guess who's going to be filling out the census if you haven't already? It's going to be you. I'm going to go over just basically all the W's, right? One, well, who are we at LACO? And then regards to the census, the what, the why, the when? What are the questions they're asking? Is this safe? How can I complete this? When should I do it? What else can I do? So let's jump on it. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about LA County Office of Education. We service, range of programs and services to support the county's 80 school districts and more than 2 million preschool and school each children. 1.5 million students in the 80K to 12 school districts that we're helping to support. And LACO provides leadership and support to school districts in areas such as curriculum instruction, tech support, professional development, and so forth. And currently, given COVID-19 restrictions, there's been a huge focus on distance learning resources for schools. And if you would go to the laco.edu website, you will see there's a planning framework for the 2021 school year. There's resources around equity and social justice and engagement. And just in general, around how to provide social media and communication to our schools with this new way of teaching and social distance learning. So that is one of the things that, well, some of the many things that LA County Office does for our districts. Next slide, please. And so, so LACO has also taken on the 2020 census. The state of California invested in ensuring an accurate and full count of all our communities. And everyone's participation is going to help to determine dozens of programs that provide essential resources to Californians. Just a quick note that 10 years ago in the 2000 census, there was an estimated $1.5 billion to the state that we have lost. And, you know, 650 million of that is LA County alone. And this was due to an undercount of the population just by not showing up. And so the LA County is, is, is on a mission to really increase and change those numbers in 2020, given everything that we're fighting against, because it is one of the hardest accounted counties in the nation. And just a little picture there, that was really funny, when your mom forgets to put you in the census form, this poor little kid. So don't be that person. Next slide, please. So just in general, what is it? Just to be sure, some of you may be doing a census for the very first time, and that is wonderful. The 2020 census counts every single person living in the United States in the five US territories. Every single person, just want to highlight that, whether you were just born on April 1st to your 100-plus years. And so the first census actually started in 1790, is required by the US Constitution. And we do this every 10 years. And so the results of it are critical because they impact the number of seats each state has in the US House of Representatives. I mean, they're used to draw congressional and state legislative districts. And again, just highlighting that data from the census helps to determine where more than $675 billion in federal funding is distributed throughout the nation. Next slide, please. So why else does this matter for you? In particular, our lens at LACO is we're working with our schools, with our families, and really thinking about some of the important data that the census helps to bring funding for is our early Head Start and Head Start programs, Title I grants, which would include giving some more funding to help teachers, behavioral support, parent engagement, our special education, Title IV, the foster care system, the daily care and adoption program, childcare, food assistance for our free reduced lunch programs, and various other health programs like Medicaid and CHIP and WIT. Next slide, please. And if that doesn't convince you enough, why else? Well, thinking right now, as the nation is battling the spread of COVID-19, the Census Bureau's data, data is being used to help in the fight. And just for an example, the American Community Survey statistics are helping to identify counties with large at-risk populations such as the elderly. And the Census Bureau's ongoing surveys, they also help with businesses as they're looking to assist in measuring the economic impact of COVID-19 and helping in regards to startup recovery opportunities. The census particularly is helping right now as we think about the resources we need at our food banks, at our hospitals, and our emergency resources. Next slide, please. And so again, just thinking more, so where are we at? Where does this stand? What, what, what am I speaking of, right? So the, so the US Census Bureau, we're constantly monitoring our self-response rate. This is your engagement. And just to give you a snapshot, as a nation, we are at 60.3% that have self-responded. And so we were bringing it down closer to California, a little bit of a spike up, 63.5%. And then we come down to LA County, 58.6. And let's just go a little smaller here in the city of Hawthorne. We are 59.5% of the self-response rates. It is, it is a strong number. We're, we're doing a great job. We're over the halfway point. But we still got almost another 40% to go. And every household that participates in the 2020 census is bringing money back to your communities. And we want to make sure that we count everyone. We're looking towards that 100% number. Someone asks me, what is the goal? The goal is 100. So let's keep going. Next slide, please. So when is this happening? Right now. We have started since March 12th to open up the lines for, for participation, and it continues. And because of COVID-19 and everything that's happened in this nation, the US Census Bureau has actually extended when you can participate all the way until October 31st. That is correct. All the way to Halloween. And so if you haven't participated or know someone that hasn't, let them know they can still do this. And I do want to highlight that, you know, writers from the US Census Bureau, those door knockers, they're going to start mid-August. And right now, many people are trying to, you know, keep that six feet of distance and to make sure that we're protecting ourselves and being safe. And one of the ways is, is not engaging at this point with other individuals. So if you don't want someone knocking on your door, try to get this done before August 11th. But it is not too late. Today is the day, and you have all the way to Halloween to keep promoting the census. Next slide, please. And so what are they asking? What is the big deal? Nine questions. Nine questions. In fact, many times you think about these questions, you've given so much more about your personal life on Facebook already. This is, this is secure questions that we need for the census. So what are they? How many people are living or staying in your home? With the date that we're looking at, I want to put this in your mind, April 1st. So it's a really critical date. April 1st is the pinpoint of what we're saying. Where were you living on April 1st? Who else was staying there? Just in case you forgot someone. Sometimes big households, you forget someone or someone in the, that lives in the backside of the house or your renter. Make sure you mark them down. Is it a house, apartment, mobile home? Just wanting to highlight, what type of home is this? What is the telephone number? This really is just to kind of check to make sure that if you miss any questions or there's some clarity that they can follow up with, they're not going to call necessarily, and it's just more of a reference point. And again, that phone is not shared. And then thinking about who's the first person's name when we get started. What is their name? What is their sex or gender, male or female? At this point, it's binary. We only have two options. But it's, we let people know that you can choose whatever gender you want to identify as in the census. Your age and date of birth. And then the last two are, is the person of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin? So it's either yes or no with some options. And then what is the person's race? And that is it. Next slide, please. And then we just start over again with the second and whoever many other people are in the room. So how's this person related to number one? If we're starting with, let's say, a husband and wife, then you say it's the wife, or the kids, et cetera. And then we're asking the questions again. That is it. And I just want to highlight, there is no citizenship question. There are no other trick questions on there. That's it. Next slide. So, what are you going to do with my information? Is this safe? I think that that is a critical question to ask and to be diligent about. And I want to reiterate that yes, yes, yes. It is confidential and it is required by law, by Title 13 to stay confidential. Results from the census are only reported in statistical formats. And if you need a visual representation, try to imagine your, your name and your, your birthday, your phone number, personal info being separated from just general data numbers and locked away in a safe for minimum 72 years. We don't even know if we'd be alive actually to see a visual presentation of us existing, but our generations will. And that could be exciting, looking up grandma on the census of 2020. And so employees of the census just swear to a lifetime oath that they are not to share information. There are penalties around this, several thousands of dollars, years in imprisonment. And this information that you share cannot be used against you in, in, in any court or government agency. And so I want to highlight, your personal identifiable information is not shared to other agencies. No ICE, no landlord, no law enforcement, no tax auditors, no other agency, period. This is very important because we, we want to make sure everyone is involved and recognize that this is, this is safe for everyone because everyone counts. Next slide, please. And so again, continuing with safety. If you actually are looking forward to someone knocking on your door, or that happens to come and be the case, we want to make sure that you know and you can help to share with your neighbors know what to look out for, right? They're not going to ask social security number, or TIN number. They're not asking for money or donations of any kind. This is not connected to a political affiliation, Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, whatever you are, it doesn't matter. You count, and they don't ask you about that. Bank account, email address, very important. The US Census should not be contacting you by email to take the 2020 census. And again, your citizenship status. If anyone calls, if anyone visits stating that they're with the Census Bureau and they ask any of the items that I've noted, this is a scam. Do not cooperate. And I want to make sure that you guys feel empowered to know and to identify that they will have an ID badge, that they will have a census bag, that it should have the logo. Their ID badge has an expiration date. That's something to look for. And they should also be providing you a sheet if they go to your door to inform you of your privacy information. And you also have a right to call and confirm that they work with the US Census Bureau as well. So making sure again that this is safe and secure if you are to engage with a Census Bureau employee. Next slide, please. So how can I do it? Well, you got three ways: online, by the phone, and by mail. Next slide, please. And so I always want to let people know before you start, you know, getting ready, decide who person number one is going to be on the form, because everyone else in your household is going to be connected to that number one. And again, reminding, count everybody that lived or stayed with you on April 1st. That is the important date to keep in mind. Determine the relationship of who's your household. It isn't per family, it's per household. If there's one address and it has, let's say, a back house or garage converted, it's everyone that lives on that household, on that property. If the mobile home is on a property, it doesn't have a separate address, it's everyone there. And I just want to highlight, because sometimes we forget people are not related to us or might be in a separate unit from the main place that you're living. Confirm everyone's age and birthday. Confirm everyone's ethnicity and race that they want to be identified as. And if you're completing it online, you just go to my2020census.gov. It is accessible in 13 different languages at minimum that you can use at that moment. And then there's other resources for other languages that might not be there. The phone number is there to complete it over the phone. And again, there are numbers for other languages as well, those 13 languages that are online. And then you can complete it by mail as well. There was a form that should have been sent to you if you had not completed it. If you haven't thrown it away, you can dust that form off from April, get it done, mail it away, and you are ready to go. And so there are several ways to make it easy to, to complete the census. Next slide. And so this may sound redundant, but it's really important. Who should I count? Once again, who's that? Everybody. Everybody that lives or stays with you. Again, keep that date in mind, April 1st. The survey is for all those who live at that address, not just family members. There's no age minimum, no age maximum. If you had a baby that was born on April 1st, that baby counts. If a baby or a child is under one years old, just mark their age as zero. Again, there, it doesn't matter your sexual preference, your gender, your citizen or immigrant status, your renter or owner. If they live there, they count. Next slide, please. Again, visually speaking, who counts? All of you. Next slide, please. So, and just kind of closing out around the census, what else can I do? We are now in towards the later end of July. People are probably thinking, yes, census, I've heard it everywhere. And I sure hope that you have. And yes, many of you may have taken it way early on before March or on April 1st. And I thank you in advance for being a part of that count, especially in Hawthorne, a part of that 50-plus percent. But there's still more you can do, because as I saw your slogan, I believe, Hawthorne is a city of good neighbors. And, and being a good neighbor means sharing this information and joining this in the campaign to advocate, to support, we're all counted. Complete it today if you haven't. Text or call at these three people after this. And just double-check, have they counted? Really simple. Direct them to the website. Post the reminder. If you have social media, you're on it, your Twitter, your Facebook, your TikTok, your WhatsApp, you name it. Put it on there. Throw it on there. We are doing big census push again the next couple of weeks. It's a perfect time to bring it up. Spread the word, not the virus. Stay home, wash your hands. Everybody's health counts, and you also counted the 2020 census. Thank you. Stay home, wash your hands. Everybody's health counts, and you also counted the twenty twenty census. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Esmeralda, for that very informative discussion on the census and why it's important. And the, the kind of questions that, you know, residents do kind of have when filling out the census on who they should they count, the age, and of course, you know, they are kind of hesitant on, you know, would this information be used against me while I'm trying to fill out and give an accurate count for the city? It is very important, even for City Hall. The closer we are to the actual number of residents that we have here in the city, the more funding we can ask from the state for additional services, which we can also partner up with the school district and providing things like better parks, better facilities, Wi-Fi, things of that, of that nature. With that, I know, Dr. Morgan, you have a, kind of a tight schedule. So what we're going to do is kind of jump into the Q and A for some of the residents regarding the upcoming school year. Let's see. We have one from Jerry, Jerry Orlemann. And he says, probably a dumb question and possibly not relevant in this meeting. I filled out a census form and have since moved. After moving to my new address, I received a census notice in my mail. Should I fill out another form? Is there a way to change anything from my previous form? I think that one's towards you, Esmeralda.
That sounds good. So really, the date that I've noted, it's important to note is April first. If you were moving an April first to this location right at that time, then count yourself the new space. But essentially, if you were living at that residence that you, you originally filled out the census form for on April first and several months afterwards, that is where you're counted. It's a snapshot of that moment. And so, so you did the right job of being counted there.
Perfect. Let's see, the next question that we have here. Quite a few. This is interesting. This is from Sonia Melgar. My name is Sonia Melgar. Do you think charging money to people that don't use masks? Many people walk without masks. I think it is not good for people. They do and follow all protocols. If it was on campus, if there was any kind of on-campus, you know, learning this year, that would be a unique kind of scenario to kind of roll out. Don't you think, Ms., Dr. Morgan?
Well, actually, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health has made it very clear that any student that is on campus over the age of two must wear a mask. If they are not wearing a mask, they would not be allowed to attend class in person. I know California has less stringent mask rules, but the County of Los Angeles has said two years and above. We do have some students that may have difficulty in wearing a mask, and we need to look at things like a face shield with a cloth underneath just to protect them. So there are other things that you can do in addition to a mask. But the Health Department has been very clear, children two and above have to be wearing a mask.
Thank you for that answer. We do have another one from Veronica Gutierrez. This is a very good question. How will parents arrange a meeting with a teacher? Will there be office hours for parents to speak to other teachers?
Absolutely. And I have to say, our teachers are really wonderful about getting in touch with parents. It's gonna be a new environment. Your meetings are gonna be like this meeting with Zoom or Google Classroom or Google Meets, but our teachers are becoming very proficient at that. And so I am sure, I'm very confident, our teachers will be reaching out to the parents within the first couple of weeks of school. And anytime a parent needs a meeting with a teacher, they are welcome to contact that teacher and set up a meeting.
Thank you for that answer. Let's see. We have another one from Marcella Solis, and this is a very good question. How are parents that are out of the home, working all day long, supposed to keep up with a longer school day online if it was already difficult to do so during the two hours they were on before summer break? Kids in elementary school do not have the capacity to keep focused for a longer period of time. So how is that supposed to help?
That is a fantastic question. And while I don't have the perfect answer right now, we are looking into ways that we might possibly be able to do some sort of childcare on campus for families that do work. We would have to ask, we would start with our essential workers and then proof of a job during school hours. We have not worked out the details. We are still trying to contract with somebody to see if that's even going to be a possibility. I get it. This environment is very difficult for everybody. And I, my heart goes out to families that have to be in that role. It is, it's not a comfortable role for them, and I, I understand that. So we are doing what we can to see if we can provide some supports for families. I'm just not prepared right this moment to address that in detail, because it is evolving as we speak.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Morgan. Seems like there's a lot of questions regarding the upcoming school year. Let's see, the next one we have here is, there's one more question from Marcella. If parents are not comfortable with having their kids on an online instruction all day, every day, how does homeschool work different, how does homeschool work differently? And how do you switch from being enrolled from onsite to homeschooling? Interesting question.
So I am going to say that any parent that is a member of the Hawthorne School District that is interested in looking into the homeschool option would want to contact Dr. Sonia Smith in our PPS office. And you can reach her at area code three-ten-six-seven-six-two-two-seven-six and just ask for Dr. Sonia Smith, and she can provide all of the information that parents may need.
Thank you very much. Let's see, another question that we have here. There's a lot of city questions. Again, regarding the city questions, I will take that over once I have all the other questions regarding the census and the school district out of the way. So bear with me. It's not, I'm not ignoring those questions or overlooking them. It's just I want to make sure that the parents have their chance to get every question they need answered. There's a question from Christie Clark, asking, when does the school year start?
In the Hawthorne School District, and we start earlier than most other districts. I'm not sure when Sentinel starts, but I know the other surrounding districts start a little bit later. Our TK through eighth grade starts August nineteenth. And our HMSA nine through twelfth graders start August twentieth.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Well, for, there's one regarding the census. Veronica Gutierrez, more of a, I think, a positive shout-out. She mentions, thank you, Ms. Flores, for the presentation. Although I have already done my census, this is good information to know, so it can be shared with others. How, how else could residents kind of take it upon themselves, kind of spread the word regarding the census?
Yes, thank you for sharing that. So many ways. As I mentioned a few. Again, you, you pick up this lovely computer we have in our hands, majority of us have it. And you start texting, you start calling, you start using your social network. And really, just any opportunity that you engage with someone else is just throwing in the senses on there. Have you been counted? Did you know? Blah, blah, blah. And so I think, like, for me and every opportunity that I have to engage with other individuals, we do that. Particularly working with the schools, we're actually kind of excited. And again, our, our students are, are not only, obviously, craving to have the best education they can this fall, but also just craving other opportunities to do things. We're working right now with several districts, and we're gonna be doing a L.A. County Census Chalk-a-thon and encouraging our students and our families to chalk up about the census. Use the information you learned today. Put it on the website, put it on your sidewalk, put it on your driveway, and post pictures. We'll be sharing information with the districts we're working with to, to promote that. That's gonna be starting around the back-to-school time as, as also an engagement. It'll be August seventeenth through Labor Day. And so one other way is buy some chalks for your kids and grandkids and yourself, and chalk it up. And just, that's another really fun way to get things out there. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Esmeralda. We have a very good question from Matisha D. What about kids with special needs? How is this going to work for them? I have a two-year-old who will be three in a couple of months and moving into the school system. How will they be affected, and what's the plan for them?
That is an excellent question, and we have been providing the same educational services to our students with special needs as our general ed students. They will also receive their services online. If they receive any additional support services, they will continue to receive those. It just looks a bit different. Obviously, we want to protect our kids from interacting, just like you may not want a census person knocking on your front door. We want to ensure that our children stay safe. So for example, if we have a student that receives speech and language services, that is done through a meeting like this online. If a student has an aide that works with them to help keep them focused or to engage them in the learning, they're right there in the class, in the virtual classroom with the student, listening to the lesson and helping to move them through the lesson. So I know that if you have, and it sounds like this parent is probably the parent of a preschool-aged child that would be going to our Prepare Preschool, which is over Previs to South. I am sure that Mrs. Beekman, who is our administrator over there, would be available for any questions, concerns, and we'll be contacting those parents so that we can arrange for our preschool students to also receive the materials they will need to access their learning.
Thank you for that, Dr. Morgan. We have a census question that came in from Joyce Boykin. I completed the census. My teen grandchild has been living with me since January. When completing the census, I do not remember filling out part for second person. I have the identification code. Is there any way to follow up and add grandchildren?
That is an awesome question. Yes. If you think you forgot somebody, anybody, it could happen, especially if you have a big home where you're just not thinking. Again, so many kids alone were miscounted in the nation. So thank you for bringing that up. The, so again, the short answer is yes. Yes, you can correct your census form if you believe you've miscounted someone. You can do it in a couple of different ways. If you realize that, you can call the Census Bureau. And what I'll do is I'll put on the, on the chat, I'll put the phone number there, as well as you can also go to mytwentytwenty.gov and enter that information with the code that you still have and include that other person. The census has a way of, of cross-checking. Also, there's duplicates that might have come in and added information. And so you can definitely do that as well. And so I'll put that number and, and, and the site, once again, on the chat. And really, I just want to highlight, like, even if you, you think you did it, but again, we're in July. You might have done it several months ago. You don't remember. Do it again. Again, the census can weed out duplicates, but we're not concerned with duplicates. We're concerned with undercount. And so if there's a possibility that you didn't count, you forgot someone, do it again. Okay?
Thank you for that. And a follow-up to it from another question from Lisa Agacoli. Oh, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. What if you completed the census and then a member moved to a new state? Do they need to redo it as well?
Yes. Now, similar to the question before, it, again, this goes back to that special date I'm stating, April first. If the move out of state happened on April first or before April first, then yes, they should be counted at, at where they were living on April first. But if that out-of-state move happened or any other move happened post that date, then they were counted at that snapshot period of April first where they live. And, and, and really, if you think, hey, but that's not fair. The next ten years, they're all over Oklahoma, not in California. Just know Oklahoma people might be coming to California as well after that time. It balances itself out. But just think of that date, April first. That's your snapshot.
Thank you for that one. We have two questions regarding the upcoming school year, Dr. Morgan. And it's a, two, two good ones. One is from Romania McLeod. And similar question to Tiffany McLeod. What is the plan for educating students in kindergarten?
That is a great question, because we know our kindergarten students, this might be their first school experience. And so it will be a virtual experience also. We specifically had some of our kindergarten teachers ask that in that school supply kit that we have some of the consumable materials that are very specific for building some of those fine motor skills that the younger students need. I, I, I wish I could say I know exactly what it's gonna look like, because this is new territory for us also, seeing the young kindergarten and TK students in a virtual environment. I have to say, I am thrilled that I have some really great kindergarten teachers that I have no doubt are gonna engage those kids and, and get them hit the ground running and get going. But we can't have students on campus. When we are able to, we're going to move kids into campus, because we know how important that socialization is. That's a huge piece. So we're gonna have our counselors and our deans working on some of those socialization activities with our kids that they're going to need in this virtual environment.
Thank you for that, Dr. Morgan. And the second question, and this, maybe a little bit of a unique one, but important, from Marcella Solis. Will vaccines be required to go back to school even if parents are not okay with this new vaccine? I believe she's talking about the COVID nineteen vaccine. My kids have all, my kids have all of their other vaccines, but I do not feel comfortable with my child being exposed to this new vaccine that we have no information on. We don't know what side effects or long-term complications they might have.
That is a fantastic question, and that is one that is not answered by me. The immunization rules are set by the legislature in Sacramento. So they will determine whether this will be a required vaccination or not in order for students to return to school. So I, I have no information. I don't even think they have addressed that issue yet, because we don't have a vaccine that is viable at this point. But again, I'm sure that they will be very quick to come out with the rules and regulations regarding this vaccine as soon as it becomes available. And until then, we don't have the answer to that.
And you have to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Morgan just mentioned. It's absolutely correct. They're still in the testing phase of creating a vaccine. The viability of one of them actually coming out and being a hundred percent in working fashion to even address this new virus is still up in the air. So to kind of have, you know, parents give their child, even for themselves, that have this vaccine that we don't have enough information about, that is going to be a higher-level kind of question. And whatever the county, the CDC kind of lays out for us will follow. But as of now, especially from the city side, we haven't heard anything of, you know, any kind of mandated vaccine programs or things of that nature. They're, they're still trying to study how it mutates and functions. So yeah, so we're all hoping that there is a vaccine coming out. We're hoping that this is all over relatively soon. But in regards to worrying about having a vaccine before the school year, there is nothing mandated as of this time. We have a, Jezebel Salas from the Family Outreach from the Hawthorne School District. She put in two, I mean, thank you for, for jumping on as well. She put in two comments in the chat box about the school district. The Hawthorne School District's first day of school is August nineteenth. Again, that's August nineteenth. And for Sentinel Valley Union High School District, their first day is Monday, August seventeenth. The next town hall, I'm going to have the Sentinel Board Superintendent on the town hall. As you can see, if I put everyone on one, there would be none of time to kind of touch on every district. But I'll make the rounds to every district through the city. And this is what kind of shedding more light on how it's not all just under Hawthorne School District. There are multiple here in the city, so please be aware of what district you're in. And, you know, call your representatives, talk to their superintendents, and, you know, ask for the same kind of Q and A. We have a few more minutes, and then we're gonna have to let our presenters go. Again, thank you for spending so much time with us. We'll get a couple more questions out real quick. Let's see. This is from Rafael Alvarez regarding the census. I share custody of my son, and I am unsure of who should count him on the census. I am in Hawthorne, and his mom lives in Inglewood. And how should you kind of proceed with that kind of reporting?
No, that's an excellent question. I'm, I'm going to repeat. And, and you will not be surprised that the answer goes back to April first. And so many of our families do share custody. Children live in different homes. If it's a fifty-fifty or however it is, it is deciding on April first where your child was living. And, and, or, so one of the fifty-fifty, it's April first. What day, on that day, where was your child at? If this custody is different, if it's much larger custody, you may want to... If this custody is different, if it's much larger custody, you may want to confirm like where the child spends the time most, most, most of the time. So it's really April 1st and where they spend and sleep most of their time. So if it's like an 80/20, then it would make more sense in Inglewood or Hawthorne, depending on who has more percentage of the child. But if it's really an equal partnership, then just you kind of have to flip the coin, April 1st, where was your child at?
Thank you for that. And I think we have, I think our last question before we kind of round out this portion of the town hall. And it's, you know, this was kind of, would be unique for me to even know the answer with from you, Dr. Morgan, and how we can kind of join together in addressing these money issues. This is from B. Ruiz. How do you determine how much each district allocation in monies received?
Well, that's very interesting, but I, and I know people confuse it often. The city of Hawthorne has nothing to do with the Hawthorne School District funding, and I know that's confusing. Our funding comes from the state and federal government, and it is determined per pupil. And there is a very complicated formula for supplemental concentration depending on your unduplicated count of students. Funding depends on how many students are on free and reduced lunch, which impacts poverty counts. It, there is funding that is determined by English learners. There is funding that is determined by foster youth. So there's a whole lot of different ways that funding is determined for school districts. So, and it's not the same throughout the state. For example, a student in the Hawthorne School District receives additional funding than, let's say, a student in Hermosa Beach. Because we get additional funding to help serve the needs of students that are English learners, and we have a high count of English learners to serve students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. And that's determined by free and reduced lunch counts. So there's lots of different things, but I know many times people confuse that the city of Hawthorne gives the Hawthorne School District money or money flows through the city of Hawthorne, and it doesn't. It flows through the state of California to the school district.
Thank you for, for kind of clearing that one. As much as I would love to provide as much funding to the students and, and the school district, if there is any kind of joint program or any ways that, you know, the city of Hawthorne can, especially through my office, help you and facilitate some needs that you guys have, go out for grant funding. You know, for the parents, that's, I love education. I love, I love the parents here in Hawthorne. So whatever, whatever you need from my office, I'll be here working. It's not like we're going to be going out anywhere anytime soon anyways.
Just a quick plug before I forget, because this is really important. And that is if you have a kindergarten aged child, and that means a child that will be turning five by, I believe it's December 2nd, but all the information's on our website, please get them enrolled so that we can ensure that they have all the materials that they need to start school successfully. So please go to our website, hawthorne.k12.ca.us, and all of the enrollment information is there. And I also wanted to give a quick plug about our food program, that we are providing meals for our students and families. And that information is also on our website. We have served thousands and thousands and thousands of meals this summer. I think we've probably hit in the hundreds of thousands in the number of meals that we've served. So please go to our website so you can find out when and where these meals are being served. We want to provide that service to the community, and so we want you to have the information. Thank you for allowing me to give that quick plug.
Oh, no, of course. And actually, I thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll also take those same links and information. I'll put that on my website as well. I'll put that on the email blast that we sent out to all the residents in addition to, you know, this recorded video. You know, the more information we can disseminate to the public and kind of ease their attention, that's what we're here for. So thank you for those two plugins. It's very important. And the last question, and just because they came in late, and I think it's a good question to answer before we kind of wrap up with your schedule. Hawthorne School District, do we have enough, do we have enough Chromebooks for all students, even those presumably entering this year from transfers or relocations already registered?
We have started to put an order together to ensure we were very fortunate that when we pivoted to distance learning, we wiped out our schools of all the Chromebooks we had in classrooms there. And so we had enough. We still have some supply of Chromebooks, but we do have an order that we are putting together to place, to ensure that we have enough for the start of the school year. It is very important to myself and my school board that our students have what they need to be engaged in learning.
Thank you for that answer. As we wrap up, if there's any other last minute things that are, you know, last little plugins that you guys want to throw out there for the parents, especially for the upcoming school year or the census, please kind of let them know now. But ahead of that, I want to thank you both for, you know, giving your precious time to speak out to the residents and the parents. I know it's a touchy subject, a touchy time, but the fact that you are, you know, coming out, you know, taking the bull by the horns and addressing these questions that, you know, a lot of, a lot of other individuals are kind of afraid to do. But I commend you both for, you know, taking this initiative, moving forward, and actually going out and getting the resources for these students, the Chromebooks, the Wi-Fi. I am going to be looking into getting access for Wi-Fi for some of the areas here in Hawthorne that don't have access to it. And if, if it doesn't show up on the agenda, you can pull me by the ear, Dr. Morgan, as always. Oh, I know. And Esmeralda Flores, I've had some videos made already for the census, promoting that out. I appreciate you coming out today as well. I'm stressing the need to have a good count and reassuring the parents that it's not going to be used against them. This is not kind of a gotcha moment. We just, we really are trying to find, you know, that right number so we can ask for every dollar that we can from the state. Again, I thank you both for coming out today and kind of leave the last few minutes for you guys to say goodbye to the residents before I jump into city business.
I, I just want to take this opportunity, I'm sorry, Esmeralda, I have to jump out of here, but I just want to thank the community for their support. I know this has been a really, really difficult time. It has for all of us. But the community support has been really very special to me, and I really appreciate it. And I know that sometimes you feel like you're out there alone, especially when you're in your house all day, every day. But thank you so much for supporting us and ensuring that we're doing right by our kids, and we're going to continue to work really hard to provide them with what they need. We can only continue to evolve and get better, and we will continue to do that. So thank you so much, and I apologize. I really have to just jump off right now. But thank you for the opportunity, Councilmember Awad. It has been a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
Bye.
Have a nice one.
Thank you.
Be safe. Esmeralda Flores?
Yes. Well, I mean, what more can I say? The time is now. It is right now. Many people, you know, right away are like, I don't have time, et cetera. Many of you are home. Many of you have time for that show. It's less than 15 minutes, 10 minutes, five. If your family is small, please do the census. And again, if you've already taken it, be an advocate with me, you know, let others know. And I think my biggest plug I want to highlight in Hawthorne, especially because working with schools, you know, the numbers that I, I share, they vary in different areas. For example, around Prairie Vista Middle School and which is around, I think, Jim, Jim Thorpe Park area. And that census tract, we're at 48.8%. We haven't hit that 50%. So if you're anywhere near that area, please spread the word, as well as Washington Elementary, Hawthorne Middle School around that area, where 54.2%. And so again, we can still increase numbers in parts of Hawthorne collectively. And so I just wanted to remind you again that this is extremely important. Every single individual counts. And I, and I thank you all for your time. I want to do a quick shout out to, again, Jezebel Salas, who you referenced at added information. She has been an amazing contact with the Hawthorne School District and working with, and getting the word out and looking forward to continuing to engage with her all the way to Halloween, October 31st. And so once again, thank you again, Councilmember, for allowing me to come speak and encourage and motivate and separate from the census. Happy National Vanilla Ice Cream Day. Have some ice cream today and do the census.
No, thank you for coming and joining us today. Have a safe one. Before I jump into city business, I also want to give a quick shout out to Christina Sheppi. I hope I didn't say, butcher your last name. I want to thank you for actually going out to the superintendents and kind of making this possible, working with my office and the school district to get some time to address all these pending questions. Without you, this couldn't have happened. So I want to greatly appreciate your time and as well as Jezebel Salas for bringing in the census lead, Esmeralda Flores, from the County of Education. And again, thank you both for helping with that. And with that, I will start jumping into city questions and new updates. Let's see. Tony Johnson, I see that you have your hand raised. I, oh, there you go. I see right here, you have a question. Tony, are you, you're asking if I do, Tony Johnson asks, do you know if companies will offer any discounts on Wi-Fi service? I believe Spectrum only serves this area. You are, you are correct, correct in kind of saying that Spectrum does service a large part of Hawthorne, but there is another couple of companies that have expanded in. I know that Verizon, as well as Cox Services, has gained contracts here within the city, and they've, they've been allowed to have some portions of it, so it's just not just one. In regards to discounts, what I'm doing through my office now is providing, trying to work out a deal where it's free Wi-Fi for the residents, especially for the upcoming school year. It's going to be very hard for every parent to try and lock in a deal prior to the school year starting. So we are starting those negotiations now. We have done some capital improvement projects for the laying down of those wires and fiber optic cables. So kind of over the next few weeks, you'll, you'll see some movement along those lines regarding the Wi-Fi program. And we're trying to cut a deal and get access to the residents before the school year starts in August. I think that's a very good question, Tony. Let's see, going back. Patty Najera, thank you for joining today. And your question is, will the city begin enforcement of wearing masks in public? I believe Manhattan Beach is issuing fines for not wearing masks in public. We need to have everyone wearing masks in order to bring our COVID numbers down. That's a very good question, observation. Yes, a lot of cities in the South Bay are moving forward with administering fines to kind of help kind of check this pandemic in line. Especially when we're coming to this upcoming school year, the last thing we want to do is really, you know, endanger not only our kids, but the parents and the teachers themselves. The second, you know, two teachers go down from a particular school district, sadly, you would have to shut down the entire school. And that's just for precautionary reasons. We don't want it to continue to spread. And then you have even more staff come down with the illness, furthering the kind of detrimental effect it would have on kind of delaying the school year and education. So yeah, I guess the county is also, along with the state and the governor, are looking into actually putting in a mandate for the entire region of enforcing those kind of fines. It is increasing. I'm at the testing center every other day. And even within the testing center, as I'm administering residents in, we are seeing an uptick in positives. It is a scary kind of moment. It's, it's, it is a real disease. It is a real virus. So please, please, I stress, practice social distancing, wear your face mask, at least for the kids, and just to make sure that they can at least go through this next school year without this, you know, overshadow of fear. Because it's kind of hard enough to start a school year, especially as a young child, their nerves are already kind of on edge, and there was all this on top of it as well. It's going to be very difficult. So again, please try and make it easier, at least for them, if no one else. We have a question coming in from Angie Reyes English. I started doing something new where if you are on the phone, you can call in and kind of ask your question live. Angie, if you are there, I'm going to, I'll put you on speaker, and hopefully you're, you're able to kind of connect through. Angie English, are you there?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Everyone else kind of here too? I guess so. Yes, perfect.
Great. Thank you, Hadar, for your efforts here. My question was, has the Hawthorne School District reached out to any parents, teachers, students? Any outreach to those families, just to see how they're doing, to check on their health, to see what concerns they have? I'm curious to know what families in Hawthorne are saying about their current situation. What is some of the most asked questions, needs, and what are the efforts to try and assist in those?
That's a very, that's a very good question to kind of bring up, especially the residents. And maybe it's something that, you know, my office and, and you being a former council member as well, kind of having that kind of feel already of how to address these issues and who to contact. If residents, if you are out there kind of uneasy or unsure or not, you know, haven't gotten the time to speak to some of the higher ups within the school district, you know, bring those issues to us. You can email us, call us at the same time. Even though we can't really dictate their, their budget or discretionary funds, we can open that line of communication like we're doing here today. We want to know what's going on. If you, if there isn't any line, open line of communication, it's very hard for us as local leaders to even understand how to pivot, how to move, and how to gain these extra resources. It's like, kind of like fighting in the dark. So for Angie, that's a very good question and a good point to bring up. Please, if you are a Hawthorne resident, regardless of the school district that you're in within Hawthorne, please address your question not only to the school board members or the superintendents, but to your local elected, local elected officials as well. We want to hear from you. We want to fix these problems and make things a smooth transition. Angie, would you want to, a very, very good point. Anything else you wanted to touch on?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Morgan. I want to thank your panelists here today. I think it's important to see the leadership in our school community, speaking to what they're doing and how they're assuring their families' resources during this time of need. And just the efforts all around with regards to your meal program to assure our students are getting, receiving their meals, their lunches, families who need meals, all of this is very important. I just like the collaboration that is happening. It's something that we have done in the past. It's something that we need greatly now, especially during this time. So I just want to say kudos, Dr. Morgan, the school district, yourself, Hadar, and just the community that's watching today. We have to stay, you know, vigilant and more importantly, hopeful that eventually we will get back, you know, to norm. I know it's not going to be a hundred percent, but I want us to think and have some positive vibes and thoughts. We have to just work collectively together to get through this. And any efforts that I could make, anything I could do, I continue to work in the city of LA as casework comes in, and I'm assisting families here in Los Angeles. I haven't stopped working. So I understand it, and I just want the, the families and the community in Hawthorne to know that we understand it locally as well. So again, just great efforts here in, in the discussion we're having.
Thank you very much. And yeah, we want to, you know, you, you work in, in LA. If there's anything out there that you see as any grant funding that we can give out to these parents, by all means, send them my way. I'll make sure we kind of get it rolled out here in the city of Hawthorne with your help. Thank you for, for joining. And, you know, wonderful question.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have. To kind of piggyback off of what Angie Reyes English mentioned, for the, my office is going to be making calls over the next few weeks to check in with residents. And they can ask for any, any kind of information regarding a wide array of topics, whether it's the school district, meal programs, eviction information, unemployment benefits. If you're a nonprofit, there are grant funding. If you're a small to mid-sized business, I had the treasurer on a couple of weeks ago, kind of going over some her new, new, unique programs and loan COVID-19 relief funds. So again, if you get a call from my office, please, please have a laundry list. That's okay. That's what we're here for. Go over every little point that you want addressed, and we'll make sure to kind of knock them out as smoothly and as quickly as possible. The, the next question we have is from Lisa Agacoli. And your, and her question is, is the eviction moratorium still in effect? So yes, the eviction- So yes, the eviction moratorium. The, the order ended at the end of July, was going to end at the end of July. And, but even though that ends in July, you still have until the end of the year to kind of make up and pay back. You know, your kind of backed up payments, rental payments and things of that nature. I do have the Senator Bradford, State Senator Bradford, I'm going to be coming on on my next office hours, not the town hall, just the office hours I do in between. To kind of go over a little bit of his upcoming new bill with Senate Pro Tem Tony Atkins. It is a bigger relief package regarding not only tenants on the residential side, but the landlords themselves. It is, it is quite a extensive relief package regarding these eviction moratoriums for both commercial, residential and landlords themselves, giving that well-needed cushion, especially as we're seeing that's not going to be over anytime soon. We're coming into the winter months. It's kind of like, it's flu season already as we're approaching and with this other lingering virus. We're working with the state to try and find every additional program we can kind of lay out. From my office side, regarding the city of Hawthorne, if we're nearing the end of July and we start seeing the beginning of the school year be, you know, extremely difficult, especially when it comes to, you know, this resurgence, I will be working to extending that as well. But luckily from the Senate bill that I've given a lot of support for Senator Bradford, that is going to supersede what I could do as a council member. Bring in those huge state funds to not only address the renters, but the landlords themselves and commercial tenants as well. So I know the landlords are kind of a, you know, a little scared when they hear, you know, a extended eviction moratorium. But do not worry that there is a program rolled into that relief fund package addressing yourselves. And if you're working with your tenant, that's how it kind of goes hand in hand. If you are providing some leeway with your tenants, there is this huge, I want to say, not, I guess the word's grant funding, or money's available for you to kind of subsidize your mortgage so that both yourself and your tenant can continue having a home and a roof over your head as we enter these winter months. So very good question. And thank you for bringing that up. It's not, it has not left our minds. It's still into effect. So I do have the eviction moratorium document up on my website, as well as I'm going to be having the senators bill on my website as well for the residents and landlords to kind of take a look at, understand what, how it works, what it's going to entail. So yes, please go onto my website at haterhawthorne.com where you'll see not only the recording of this video and all the previous videos, but all the other links and programs that we're able to bring in to the city of Hawthorne through my office, through all these guest speakers. Let's, the next question we have here is from Kevin Mayer. What is the process of getting speed bumps installed near a school with a history of speeding and accidents? The area is the 4,000 block of 129th Street between Washington and Jefferson. HMS is at the end of the street. Thanks. If it's around the school and it's for predominantly to kind of help the, not only the students themselves not get themselves hurt, but also the parents. The process is extremely easy when it comes to that kind of situation. If you can, please give me a call right after this meeting and I can kind of go over the details of what that looks like. But for a broad kind of overview, it's, you're bringing the school and as you did right now, the specific street that's of concern. I would send out someone from my code enforcement office to kind of go look at the site, overview what kind of speed bumps, how many speed bumps we're going to need. Now, if it's in a heavily residential block, it predominantly just needs a few signatures from the residents that are alongside the school, as well as the school district. You know, being okay with these speed bumps being implemented. But what's the nice thing about it is it does not come from the school district. So they wouldn't have any issue with it really. The funding will come from the city hall itself. And of course, residents alongside the school district, I mean, that's the school. I can't see them having an issue with having speed bumps if it's protecting both the children and the parents. It's, so for that kind of scenario, it's relatively easy. So please give me a call after this meeting and I can give you the necessary paperwork and the amount of signatures you may or may not need. It really depends on, you know, if there's a lot of homes around it. If it's just the school district itself and a few homes, then it's just my office and the school district looking, surveying the area and making the adjustments for, you know, safety, speed bumps to be placed in there. So thank you, Kevin, for that question. Again, let me kind of, I'll put in the chat box now. My cell phone. Let's see. Where's the chat? That is funny. How come I can't find? One second. You know, it's interesting. There is no there is no chat box for some reason. I'm not seeing it. So I'm going to do instead, I'm just going to kind of repeat my number. It's on my website. It's everywhere else. It's even on my Facebook. It's not hard to find. Even the email blast that you received regarding this town hall. So my cell phone number is 310-418-5955. Again, my phone number is 310-418-5955. I'll type that to you as well. Kevin, let me see here. Make sure I missed you. There you are. Let me also type that for you. I can, I can make, I can reply to each individual resident, but to do a, for some reason, won't let me do a all-out chat. That's the next question I have here is from John McHale. Thank you for joining today. Your question is, will you be, will you be able as mayor to have the Hawthorne Plaza Mall developed? It would really help the city and boost jobs and the economy. It looks bad now as it is. The county is there, but will their lease expire? Yeah, very good question. This, this particular project has been a thorn in my side. Ever since I got into the council, I did implement a blight fee that we started using against the mall owner and every other kind of de-large vacant parcel that's been, you know, not in use for quite some time. Where we're charging them per day, and I think we're now going, I think it's 2,000. That's just on the, on the fact that it's being unused. With all the other kinds of citations where we're putting up against the building. But it's really putting the pressure on, on the mall owner himself. But this, the sad thing is that there is, there seems to be some working relationship, other members in the council with the mall owner. We have hit that threshold where we can move through some sort of litigation with our city attorney. I placed that language within the blight fee. But it takes, it takes a vote of three. There's hesitation from the leadership side, I guess, because he's a big wig with a lot of money. They're fearful of kind of, you know, cracking cracking down on the mall owner and some of these other large vacant properties. But we do have that capability. I am going to be bringing it out as a petition to kind of push the council into moving our city attorney's office into some form of placing a lien, which is exactly what I put into the blight fee ordinance that I had drafted. It was really the first of its kind of kind down here in the South Bay. I got the idea out from the city of Berkeley as what they use to kind of reshape the properties around the campus itself, before you kind of get what you see now today near the UC Berkeley campus. It is a wonderful piece of legislation that I was able to push through. Luckily, I was able to get just enough votes to have it pushed. So we have the teeth there. It's just, I'm going to need some of the residents' help coming from the upcoming couple of weeks, as I put out the petition and email to really drive that point and kind of put them up against the wall to say, look, it's, it's either now or never. Just stop with the grandstanding, stop with the favoritism and just have it, something developed. Whatever the case might be, but having that 24 to 28 acre parcel empty for this long, it's astounding. You just gotta, you just gotta, it's that same play that keeps messing with Hawthorne is these developer money. Luckily with that, they already kind of see what kind of teeth I'm bringing out. So rest assured. And God willing, if I'm here in November, it's pedal to the metal. It's just full on, full force. So thank you for bringing that up, but it is still on my mind even till now. The next question we have is, Matisha D. Can we get, can we work on getting better quality wifi here in Hawthorne by Hawthorne High for Spectrum? It's so glitchy over here. You know, thank you for kind of bringing that to my attention. If Spectrum is kind of glitchy in that area, so what we're doing now is we're working with essentially all these other companies and we're working to have one company kind of service the entire city. So we are going to look at who's going to provide us the best and high-quality wifi at a, you know, at a good price. This is the taxpayers' money. But at the same time, you don't want to have a contract signed and receive a service that's not even going to work. If you're going to have all these students on it, it goes, it begins to crash. There's really, then you just wasted those funds on a service that you thought would be, oh, you got it at a good cost. So you thought you got yourself a deal. But actually you're going to be wasting more monies just to fix the issue that occurred from that contract. So no, rest assured, we are looking at every company. When we're putting it out for bid, you know, they're all throwing their bids at us and proposals. But I am taking a strong look at what kind of gigabyte service, the speed. And the one part that a lot of people kind of don't realize to look into is at what sort of cap do we have as a city of, once we hit it? Do they slow down the service? It's kind of like when you have your AT&amp;T bill, they give you, say, you know, per month, 25 gigabytes of data. And once you hit that, even though it's unlimited, it is a reduced speed, almost at a point where it's kind of not usable for the things that you really needed for. So the next part of that would be my office really looking to getting the best quality and actually working them down to a price instead of us working up to their price. So thanks for that question, Matisha. You know, I want to also give out my, my email. I gave out my number, but for my email as well. Because of the amount of calls I get, you know, shoot a text too. But here, it's on the screen here. Let's, there you go. Haterawad@haterhawthorne.com. So please call, text, email, or jump onto the office hours I hold on every, every Monday at 6:00 PM and then the first and third Thursday at 12:00. Again, the second and fourth are these town halls, but every other one is centered around just asking, answering questions from you, the residents. Let's see. Jezebel Solis jumped back in. Thank you again. Mentioning that she forgot to mention that our Hawthorne Math and Science High School first day of school is Thursday, August 20th. Again, that is Thursday, August 20th. Please have that out there. Write that down and have it saved there. Let's see, we have. I want to try and get through as many as I can before we have to jump off. Let's see. And we have a few raised hands too. So let me see here. Vicky Torlotten. My home is next to the 405 freeway. Last week, a fire broke out on the area between our home and the freeway. Weeds have been growing up and over our fence. If the sparks would have reached those weeds, our fence would have gone up in flames and our home most likely would have fallen. How can we get someone to come out and take care of the weeds? Why, if it's, first off, let me start by saying, I'm sorry you had to go through that kind of scare. It's not the, oh, it's, that's hard. The last thing you want to be dealing with is, is this virus trying to stay at home, protect yourselves and your kids and your family, and then just have this fire break out. And that kind of scenario when it's that much of an issue, and that shouldn't have not occurred in the first place. Please call me right after this meeting. Let me get your exact location and I will have code enforcement out there. And we'll be dealing with Caltrans. When it comes to weed abatement, we do have some leeway regarding addressing those, the weeds. You know, it is Caltrans area. So basically from them, it says, look, as long as you're not asking them Caltrans to work and pay for it, we tend to just go there in ourselves and kind of take out all those weeds to protect the residents. So don't worry on that. Just after this, or even shoot me an email, give me your address or the location. This way I can have code enforcement out there right away and take care of that pressing issue that we don't want it to occur again. And the last thing we can handle right now is, you know, having our frontline workers deal with the pandemic and then putting out fires. So Vicky, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Please send me the address and I'll have code enforcement out there to take care of that issue. Let's see. We have Angie, we have another caller here. Angie Reyes English has other comments. Let's see. Angie.
Hi, Hador. Let me just again, thank Dr. Morgan and I didn't get the lady's name from the census 2020. We all know how important census 2020 is important, especially for our community of Hawthorne. So I want to emphasize when we're doing outreach to our community, they, we also let them know to fill out their application if they haven't already and to go online. It's probably the easiest way to get counted. So we got to keep pushing census 2020. It's essential to Hawthorne. We need all the dollars we can and representation to assure that we're getting our fair share. And that's, that's something that's very important to all of us here on this call.
Thank you for, for, for giving that extra tidbit of information, Ms. English. And it's always glad to, always good to hear back from you and seeing that you're still out here doing the public service work that you're, you're known for. Again, if you have any more tidbits like that, I love to have you at every meeting and kind of always throwing out those little tidbits out for myself to take advantage of and as well as the residents. So again, thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Let's see. I think I can knock out the few remaining questions we have here. Let's see, we have the question from, oh, actually a comment from Brenda Muse. Sorry, Mr. Awad, I had to leave me, the meeting because I'm at the middle school assisting visitors. Thank you for answering my question. Again, I apologize. Brenda, no, thank you for asking that question. It was a very important question, especially regarding homelessness. You know, I'll touch on it right before I wrap up at the meeting about some of the programs we have to even further address that issue. Because there's one other big topic that I kind of want to touch on as I have the majority of the residents on. And then answering the remaining questions I have here on site is I wanted to kind of go through the reminders of the COVID center and this new Eventbrite, you know, front of the line kind of pass that my office is kind of set up. There was a little bit of a glitch in the beginning, kind of getting this process set with OptumServe and the county. So real quick, I will go back to answering the questions on, in the chat. But I just wanted to really go over this quick information. So for the Hawthorne Testing Center, proud to announce that I have set up same-day walk-in testing exclusively for Hawthorne residents between 1:30 and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I know there's been a little, you know, a little glitch in the beginning, but we've worked all those out. So what we have officially now is 20 walk-ins per day. So please go on to the Eventbrite link there. So the whole process is you go to lhicare/COVID19testing or covidtesting.com. Sign up there, get your patient ID number. Now typically you go from having the patient ID number and then you register for an appointment. But now, as you can see, it's taking residents two to three weeks. and then you register for an appointment. But now as you can see, it's taking residents two to three weeks, um, just to get an appointment. So please, uh, once you get your patient ID number, then go to testing.haterhawthorne.com. I can't stress enough that you have to fill this out prior to arriving to the center. Because there's a limited of 20 spots per day, if you're driving out to the center and hoping that you can register there for the front of the line pass, um, it's really first come, first served. There's 20 spots each day. There's 20 tickets available on Eventbrite. So please jump on there, fill out, get the ticket prior to arriving at the testing center. So I'm able to get 20 residents each day. We're working to have it expanded even further to 25, um, up to 40. Uh, we, we were hitting 40 in the beginning, but it was a little strain, strenuous on LH system. So as they're upgrading their system for this new rollout, uh, we're also working on having just walk-ins built into their system as well to kind of address further Hawthorne residents. So again, this is exclusive for Hawthorne residents. Exclusively through my office. So please, uh, if you are a Hawthorne resident, go to lhicare dash slash covid testing, sign up for your patient ID and then quickly jump on to my website at testing.haterhawthorne.com. And then go on the Eventbrite and get that front of the line pass. You do not have to show symptoms. You do not have to have insurance and it's free. So, um, it took a while for, it took a little back and forth for me to get these, um, walk-ins for our residents. So please take advantage. Sign up and, um, make sure you're aware of the date that you have on your ticket. I don't want you guys to arrive there thinking that you have a front of the line pass, but it's for a particular day that you signed up for. So again, it's 20 a day. Um, I'm working to expand it out further. So please, please get your patient ID number first and then register for the pass. You don't have to print it out. You just have to have it either on your phone, some way for us to kind of scan it or look at the order number and then you'll be in and out. It takes five minutes. Um, take advantage of it for the school year. Um, and thank you so much for, uh, utilizing this testing center. Again, it's covid19.lacounty.gov slash testing for information on the rollout of it. I do have videos on my website of the entire process. It's not that, you know, it's not that intrusive, just a Q-tip up the nose. The whole thing is five minutes from getting in and out. Uh, and again, you know, uh, for up to date information on Hawthorne, please visit haterhawthorne.com. So I just wanted to plug that in there before I answer, uh, the last few questions. Let's see. Next question is from Lisa Agokoli. Follow-up question, if it's not rent related, are there other exemptions? If, if you can kind of be more precise on, um, what kind of exemptions? It, 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 when, when, when I drafted with city staff, I did also have commercial tenants within there as well. So it does cover commercial tenants and that, and, and residential, residential tenants. And it does cover a few areas and not just, um, rent related issues, but if, at least if you can kind of, um, in the chat, uh, kind of be or touch on exactly what kind of exemption, uh, that way I can better answer that question for you. Let's see. Gerson Salazar, uh, your question is the Robert F. Candy Medical Facility in our city has been closed for years. What efforts, if any, has the city made to refurbish and open this facility during the pandemic? Wonderful question. Um, and thank you for bringing that up. Uh, so through my office, a lot of residents, uh, if you haven't received the email, I think it was back in, I want to say end of April, May, when I was first trying to work with the county and the governor to get the city of Hawthorne a testing facility. I had the county reps here as well as the, uh, Governor Newsom's COVID-19 Task Force here back in the beginning of this whole shutdown. And we looked at both the Betty Anger Sports Center where it is now and the RFK Hospital. Because that initial meeting, um, they were able to gain funds to actually refurbish parts of the inside. I was actually surprised how they kind of reimagined how it was and kind of kept the same aesthetics of what it was like when it was open. So they have done a wonderful job, um, kind of retrofitting the inside. And, and we are trying to bring another testing facility to the RFK site now that it is done and kind of usable, at least for the first few floors. It's, it's amazing. I'm going to be out there taking pictures of the inside of the work they've done. Um, and kind of let the residents see that we have been doing some work, um, within the hospital. And it kind of goes back to the blight fee, um, policy that throughout, that if there is an unkept unused building for X amount of time, there is this kind of urgency of having something done because the fines from my office continue to escalate until there's some movement. But of course it was a partnership. It was more of a, they kind of took me more seriously when they saw this kind of legislation on from my table and from my office. Um, and, and look, they just needed some open lines of communication. So I'm happy to say we sat down, uh, and they really want to have it, you know, used for a medical center, medical practice facility, something. So it is kind of, uh, the first few floors are up and running. We're going to have a soft kind of use for it now with the testing of COVID and some antibody testing, hopefully in the future in the end of August. But at the same time, we're working with the county to bring an actual medical center to kind of overtake that, that hospital site. Luckily I was able to speak with the owner, addressing this, the hospital side itself, carving out that parcel out from everything else he owns and actually having it built to suit for a medical center or facility. So please, if you guys have any contacts, I'm, I'm talking to Kaiser now, um, talking to other hospitals to, and other medical facilities or centers just to kind of, who would be willing to come in there and, um, take over the building. If you have any contacts, please call my office. It's beautiful from the inside, from what they've done, a few renovations that in the paint job and really kept its, uh, its original aesthetic. Yes, uh, I'll have more on that. Uh, but in the mail piece I sent out in the emails, um, going over, uh, the whole discussion with the county and the state, um, FEMA and Congressman, Congresswoman Waters also, uh, came down to look at the renovations, um, and, and really now kind of seeing the actual life within the building itself. So there's work being done there, uh, but there sadly, there's not work being done within the mall for some, there's more good luck there. So that's gonna be, it's gonna still be hitting hard. Uh, but no, the, the hospital RFK is finally moving forward, um, with some kind of implement, some kind of medical use. Let's see. I'll end today at two. Um, so let me see how many more questions I can knock out prior. I'm kind of getting a little parched. Omar, thank you for actually joining today. I'm going to copy your email. But these are my notes. One second. There you go. Then I want to lose your email. Okay, and perfect. So I saved you in Omar, um, after the meeting. I'll, uh, I'll shoot you an email and if you are available for a, a call, um, I'll shoot you a text. And if you're free, we'll kind of go over everything with you at the same time. Let's see. Patty Najira. Your question is how do we tend office hours and I don't have Facebook? So luckily for that, uh, you don't have to have just Facebook. You could do a, a call in at the same time. Uh, there, I'm going to start providing a, a phone number as well that you can kind of jump into. Kind of like the Zoom session where, uh, just call in. Uh, but if it is a, since I have the handle on how this whole Zoom and Facebook Live kind of integrates together now with my webinars, I'm going to start having all my office hours essentially, uh, kind of be conducted this way. This way kind of giving those that do not have access to Facebook, well, at least get access and jump on with Zoom. Making it a lot easier for you, for, for all the residents. I know it's kind of difficult for, not everyone uses Facebook. So yeah, uh, I, I'll start sending out a Zoom link alongside my regular office hours where, um, those that do not have access to Facebook can just jump on. Let's see. I actually want to check the Facebook live feed real quick. Don't want it to kind of go down. Okay, perfect. Um, let's see. Next question, um, from John McHale. Actually, thank you for, for the, for the love and the shout out and for joining me today. Uh, it just kind of was, oh. Where? Mentioned that, thank you. We want our city to develop and build. We support you and you have my vote for mayor. Please let us know how we can help. Again, thank you. Just, just having the confidence in, in my ability and, um, you know, my policies. If, uh, the fact that you guys are saying that it, it's what I'm saying makes sense and that it would put, you know, the city back on some kind of fiscal stability. I mean, we, we were kind of treading on that when I started doing the, um, my Oversight Budget Committee, to really watchdog the, the funds. Um, and that's what really helped kind of keep the city stable. You know, the only finance background on, on the council, it, it was easy. Now it's kind of taking that, that that snapshot where we are now and kind of developing this, you know, four, five-year development kind of marketing plan for the city, but with more aggressive tone. We were still having individuals reliant and on these favors, um, that we want to end. They, they're just still playing these games and, and we can't afford it. Like I'm getting tired of it. So I was like, nope, uh, it's either I leave the city and, and, and I couldn't do that. Unfortunately, I did not want to have the residents kind of go through this next chapter, especially in this pandemic, uh, without some sense of leadership. So I'm swinging, um, and then just spread the word and, um, look, I'm only running because, uh, I have the comments from you guys. So again, thank you, uh, for that. Next question is from Rafael Alvarez. Besides being self-employed, I also volunteer with a nonprofit youth soccer club. We have created and implemented strict protocols to hold training sessions without player contact and ensuring social distancing at all times. Our biggest challenge has been access to fields and I would like to ask for your help to get access to available park areas to help keep our youth active. I know there are many concerns about the safety and I would love to have an opportunity to share what we are doing. We have been using private fields, but they are extremely expensive and not sustainable for our organization. Oops, sorry about that one. A little parched. Um, so Rafael, um, first off, um, you know, thank you for still during this time of need, um, implementing some sort of outdoor program with the youth, you know, having them kind of inside. It's, it's not, it's not really healthy, not only for health reasons, but also for their, you know, mental state of mind. So I, I commend you for, for doing that. Um, I'm, I'm sorry to see that's hard to gain access to fields, but, uh, call my office. I'm going to type, I'm gonna chat in there my number to you. Um, give me a call, um, after this meeting. Let me see what kind of, you know, program you've implemented and laid out. So this way I kind of can reassure myself and the parents and the residents that, you know, if we do have this program laid out, that it's going to be practicing, uh, and adhering to social distancing rules and, you know, having not only the coaches, but the parents and students safe. So, um, let me type in there. Let's see. Here's my phone number. Oh, um, so yeah, give me a call and, um, we do have fields here in the city of Hawthorne. I, if it's a, if it's a well-laid out, um, program where I can feel that the, the students are safe, the kids are safe, uh, then yes, I have no problem with finding fields for you to access, um, without these, you know, unheard prices. I'm pretty sure you're, you're seeing as a nonprofit. Next we have is from Christina Soto. Uh, thank you for joining, by the way. What role does, what role does Hawthorne PD and the city have over homeless encampment in Hawthorne and the crimes, burglary mainly? They are committing towards Hawthorne residents. Oh, you're talking about the homeless themselves. Well, uh, the city and Hawthorne PD, um, when it comes to homelessness issues and burglary crime and things of that nature, it does kind of, it strictly kind of falls under us. Uh, no one else is going to really address it. It's not like the county is going to come in and say, hey, we'll come and fix it. They do provide funds and resources for us. Um, we do have programs, um, that we're working with ahead of time, uh, some like rehabilitation programs first. We, we do, we kind of, we will send out, and especially now implementing where we're sending out caseworkers to these, um, individuals to kind of first lay out this more friendly kind of feel and not aggressive to the point where we're providing them, um, food, a place to live, a training session. You know, how to build a resume. We're, we're, we have all these additional programs first to kind of get them back on their feet. And, and see what the issues are with them for how they got into that predicament in the first place. Now, if it goes to the extreme where, you know, they don't want to, you know, a lot of people don't want to take advantage of these programs. They would rather still stay on the street sadly, um, and, and some would continue to, um, you know, commit these, you know, these, these acts. Um, so for, for, for those individuals that were, are not kind of taking up to the caseworkers programs and kind of these rebuilding life seminar and, and situations like that. Then us as the city and, and the Hawthorne Police Department, after we've exhausted all these new social programs, is when we kind of address them to moving them out from the area and, uh, you know, if it is a burglary of a, of a, you know, misdemeanor to a felony offense, of course they are arrested, um, if they're not going to take on the, um, the programs we're laying out for them. But yeah, it is under our jurisdiction. Um, so please Christina, if you have any issues like that, um, either call Hawthorne PD, uh, call my office. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll go out there first, trying to see how we can kind of get them off the streets, um, with these programs. Um, and if it persists in the same area, we, or if the, the cause of concern from the beginning is extreme, we kind of move in first of removing them from the area and the premise, clean up that area and then address how we can you know, either help the individual or kind of see the next steps from there on the legal side, um, to the city attorney's office. But please send me, um, give me a call or send me an email of, you know, which area, uh, you're particularly talking to. There, there's a few areas in my mind that I'm trying to address. Um, and I want to see if this falls under one of them. We have a few more minutes. Uh, let's see. Omar, thank you for providing your phone number. Let me grab that before. Okay. Rafael, thank you for saying that you'll reach out. Let's see. Here we go. Um, we have another question from Elizabeth Guerrero. Hello, what is the city of Hawthorne doing about the homeless people hanging around the 99 cent store? That's a very good, um, area that you brought up and the reason for it is that is one of the areas my office is looking at. Um, and not only there, but there is a long corridor on Hawthorne Boulevard where, you know, majority of the storefronts that are, and it's, it's, I don't particularly like how it was built out, um, but where the storefronts are on the front of the boulevard and having all the parking in the back. It does give that kind of shielding to, um, inviting this kind of safe haven, um, you know, that, that certain individuals take advantage of. So we, we are looking into those areas to try and find some way that what is the cause? What, why are they there? Is it, is it, you know, they just lose their job and they just get back on their feet? Are they just, you know, looking for something, some kind of rehabilitation program first? Because a lot of these individuals that are homeless have not been recently. Uh, and because of COVID, you're seeing a lot of neighbors on the street. Uh, the last thing I want to do is make, you know, they're, they're already you know, their, their already hard life even harder. So we are going over there, we're cleaning out the areas and doing extensive cleaning when we're going to address the homeless issue and those encampments behind the storefronts. At the same time, we are, as we're removing them from the premises, we are giving them these access, these programs, but that's up to them really. I am happy to say that there are individuals that are taking advantage of it and they're kind of getting back on their feet and, you know, it was just a little bump in their timeline. And for others, they're just, they, they find it a little easier to stay on the streets. And when they're taking that kind of route, of course, we cannot let them, you know, continue to kind of, you know, hurt and you know, bother the residents, of course, especially when they're not taking advantage of the programs we're giving them firsthand. So for, for those individuals, we do kind of have this through our city attorney's office where they are escorted and placed in a separate facility with the county. But it's only after we exhaust the path program, after we exhaust these seminars, the, we're, there are programs, we're actually putting them inside these unused hotel rooms and motel rooms, providing food and trying to just get them back on their feet, kind of going through some detox phases as well, just to kind of get their head back on straight. But we are starting with that now. We are working with, I want to say it's Saint Margaret's Center. They provided a hundred thousand dollar grant funding towards this kind of program. And I'm happy to say it's, it's going quite well. And it's beautiful kind of see, taking this different kind of tone where you're helping rather than being this aggressive front. And it helps clean up the street at the same time, you know, for those that you don't want to take advantage. Sadly to say, other measures are taken. I need a few more minutes. Let's see. Isabel Sauce, again, thank you for coming in the last stretch. She mentioned that, oh, oh, thank you for all the information. Please visit Hawthorne School District for more information regarding kindergarten enrollment and the grab and go meals. Yes, I don't want to forget about that. As Dr. Morgan mentioned, the amount of food that the district is giving out to these families in need and to the students is tremendous. It's, it's almost shocking to know it's been thousands of, close to hundreds of thousands of individuals that they're, they're serving through this whole pandemic. It's not an easy thing to do, especially putting themselves on the front line. So I want to thank you, Isabel, for being the family outreach coordinator, especially I know that you're behind a lot of these programs. The teachers and the employees and the superintendent at the Hawthorne School District going out, getting these Chromebooks, the wifi and these meals. So please go into the Hawthorne School District, look on their website for all this information. I will also place it on my website and the following email blast to the residents after this Zoom meeting is over. And to complete the census, Hawthorne counts, please. The more that we get counted, the more money we can ask from the state. And it's, it's, I know it sounds weird, but it is kind of structured that way. If we come in undercounted, they do for some reason kind of chastise us for it and they kind of take back some of the funding. So please, as, as Mel the floor has mentioned, count everyone, April 1st where they were and just count. Think of it as every person that you're able to count, that's an additional service we can provide to not only your, your, your child within the school district, but here in the city of Hawthorne, we can provide extra services and make your quality of life that much better. Should we knock on a few more? From Christie Clark. Compassion for the homeless trauma is real and complex. I've spoken, for example, I've spoken for example, who are unable to be inside. It's not unusual as simple as them not wanting to help the homeless, the house. Yes, you're correct. You know, before we even had these programs implemented, it was a kind of one solution. Fix all, I guess they had where it was more of a remove them and place them somewhere else. You're correct. The compassion is gone. Like then, as I mentioned, it's a lot of these individuals now that are becoming homeless were some of our recent good neighbors. I've seen this happen. I've, I've seen the transition from being a resident that was always in the community to now becoming homeless. It, it's different. It really tugs at your heartstring when you really see people that you care and love for go through so much trauma. And it's not fair. It's not, sometimes it's not their fault. And to be treated worse than dirt, when it wasn't their fault. It's like beating a horse when they're down. So no, I completely agree with you. That's why we're taking this other shift to kind of have these caseworkers and programs laid out first, rather than just making them feel like dirt and nothing. So yeah, my office at least is taking a very compassionate side first. It's about rebuilding and seeing where they are, what's the best way to address and help their needs? And then get them to where they want to be. But again, thank you, Christie Clark, for bringing that beautiful point for the residents to kind of understand that not every homeless individual you see on the street, you know, is evil. Okay, we have two last questions and I'll knock out before I wrap up and leave. Victor Guerrero. Your question is, speaking of Robert F Candy, who has rented that space now with all those cars in there? He has a very good question. And it was brought up before and, you know, a lot of us were actually asking the same question at the last council meeting. And luckily we were, we were given that question, that luckily we were able to receive an answer, especially from our city attorney looking into it. So when the pandemic first hit, especially, you know, travel and air flights and airlines were the first ones to really take a huge blow. They did get this huge relief package. I wasn't really necessarily a fan of, but they were given that. But a lot of the businesses around there, especially rental companies did not, and they were hit hard. So for that particular space, we found that it was Hertz Rental Company. They filed for, and if you've been following the news, they filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy. They were at the brink of actually going out. So in an effort to kind of, you know, help the, it wasn't like the actual corporation itself, it was like a mom and pop shop kind of rental facility, mid-sized business near the, within the LAX area. When LAX shut down and there was no service, sadly, they had to start shutting down. The tenants, the landlords there were not kind of giving any kind of wiggle room for their rent per month. So at the site there, they actually took them in, had them place their vehicles now until they were getting back on their feet. Now, they did have a pulse of almost coming back, but then now with this resurgence, it looks like Hertz took another hit. And unfortunately, within the next month or so, we may actually see them actually slim down their businesses, lay off employees. And, you know, all those cars are going to be kind of auctioned off and just gone. So it's a kind of sad thing to see that that was a once mid-sized business, especially, I think some of the residents were here from Hawthorne that lived here. Sadly, their business went belly up and they're kind of hanging all in there, but it's so that's what the cars are in the back. The council was also wondering, you know, who, what and where. And the city attorney, you know, was able to go in there, gain the information and then found out that they were given a temporary parking permit, I guess, during the beginning of the pandemic. So basically now it was just reissuing that permit as we start to see this surge come and them actually declaring that they're going to be completely bankrupted. If you, if, if you want to try and help out some of the other businesses, that's why please partake in some of the local businesses. You have, you know, residents here that, you know, do have businesses outside the city of Hawthorne. And it's just sad to see that they're hurting. No matter how big, how small, everyone's getting hurt. So please, please participate in your local businesses, help them out during this time. It's crucial. Matisha. Matisha, I express interest but never heard anything else as it's coming to. Glad the committee is coming. If you've gone already, I want to, maybe I missed the point of what committee you were talking about, but if I address that that's coming back, I'm glad. But yes, as you mentioned, you're leaving, you have to, and you'll email me about the mailman not coming. Oh, yes. There has been an issue with the mail and the post office. It has been kind of delayed on many fronts. And that's because of they're, they're not operating on a skeleton crew and it's getting worse and worse. But again, thank you. Please email me. We can talk about that later. And Christie Clark, again, thank you for the comments and everyone else, thank you for joining. The next office hours is this coming Monday at six and the next town hall, I'm going to have the Sentinel School Board, Sentinel School District Superintendent and the College Board of Trustees, Mike Fong and Scott Spunkin to kind of go over how the high school side of the district here in Hawthorne that covers Hawthorne is going to roll out. And then on the college side, what particular programs that your child can take use of from now? How to prep themselves for the upcoming college year, especially here locally. And then after that, we're going to bring on Wiseburn School District and hopefully that wraps up all the schools before the school year starts. Again, thank you guys for joining in today. And I'll talk to you guys soon.